All right, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, September 24th, 2019. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Okay, would you please join us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
The Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Thank you for joining us tonight, and every time we come back here, there's something new, and just want to thank Laura for getting us these tables, and it really has come together so nice in the boardroom. So, it's a big adjustment, and we know how much work it took. So, first, as always, we'll start out with the superintendent's report.
Board President Marquess, members of the boards, good to see you all this evening. It's great to be here. I do want to compliment both Laura, Rob Price, and his team for all of their work on our boardroom. I just think it's a wonderful place for us to meet and engage with our community, and so, kudos to the team for putting this all together. Had a busy week last week. It was our first district parent council meeting of the year, and I'm proud to announce that it was the most attendance, or the most attendees most schools represented since I've been here as superintendent. Between that and our district accountability committee, also setting new records for participation, I'm just really encouraged by the engagement of our community and folks that are excited about what's happening in Boulder Valley schools, and so, I want to thank all those members from the DPC who showed up last week. Starting in October, board members, I will begin to start to start my grand tour in visiting every single school once again, similar to how I did last year. We'll be meeting with faculties, engaging them on some of the changes that have happened this year, and also talking about our new strategic plan, and also getting feedback. As we proceed with the strategic initiatives within our strategic plan, it's critical that we keep our finger on the pulse of the folks that are most important doing the work, and that's the folks that are in our schools. And so, I look forward to those conversations, and I've sent out a message to all of our teachers during professional learning sessions that they had last week that I'll be becoming, so I'm excited for those visits. That'll be starting, I believe, October 2nd is the first visit, and so, excited for that. Board members, you have two resolutions for approval on the consent agenda this evening, and those may be pulled for discussion, but I wanted to talk a little bit about both of those. Our first is a resolution to support Proposition CC, which is a referred ballot measure through HB 1957. This, if passed, this will allow the state to keep and spend revenue over its current spending limit. Funding will be allocated into three categories: higher ed, transportation, and public schools. There will be some restrictions on these funds, and these will be one-time funds, but by approving and supporting Proposition CC, it does provide a viable path to securing more funding for schools across Colorado. And so, it's something that we feel is important and something we discussed in our work session as we talked about legislative priorities several weeks ago. The second resolution is the support of Census 2020. As many of you know, Census, the Census 2020 is right around the corner. We know that this is really important to our community because the data that is collected within the Census is used to allocate over $675 billion federal dollars for health, transportation, child, elder care, emergency preparation response, public and social support programs of all kinds, Title I funds, and National School Lunch Program, and special education grants. So, participating and encouraging our community to participate in Census is important for all of us in the community. And the last comment that I'd like to make is that tomorrow, a group of superintendents, I think the count is 85 and counting, will be submitting a letter to the Colorado State Board of Education in regards to some changes they're considering on the school and district performance frameworks. The State Department of Ed gave us four options of choices that they wanted for us to give them feedback on which one we liked best, and after conversation and consideration, our letter will be sharing that there actually needs to be more work to do beyond those four options. As we think about the performance frameworks, and certainly accountability is important to us, and I would argue that we'll hold ourselves more accountable than anybody would ever be able to hold us outside of this community, and that our community will hold us accountable. We have to begin to think beyond just test scores, to think about, you know, how do we begin to evaluate the practices of schools and school districts? Many states across the country have already done this, and so, we're encouraged to have more conversations around this. There's also an opportunity that I've shared with you all within Senate Bill 204 that is actually a law that was passed last year that allows grant dollars to districts to think about what could different accountability systems look like, and that's going to be an opportunity that we're pursuing. But I wanted to let you know that that's something that I've signed on to and I believe in, and looking forward to continued conversation both at state level and locally here with this board and with our community around what that can look like in the future. And that's all I have.
Great. Any questions for Dr. Anderson?
Kathy. Thanks, Rob. I was wondering if you could share that letter with us? I'm saying it'd be helpful to know what they're saying and what they're asking for. Thanks.
I'll show it when you start.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay, our next item is public participation, but we don't have any today, so we'll be moving to board communication. Board members, would you like to share anything? Rob, Richard?
I just want to give a big shout-out to our principal at University Hill Elementary School for being awarded the Leadership Award, I believe it was, for bilingual education in the state of Colorado. Ina Rodriguez Meyer has been at University Hill for a while now, and I've seen the work that she does. And I've also seen how dedicated she is for parental engagement, family engagement, and at school. And I believe that leadership like hers really makes a difference in our schools, not to say that our other principals are not, but that leadership style, I think, is really wonderful to see, and how she, if anybody's ever been at University Hill, how she greets the children, how she greets the families almost on a daily basis. I've seen her there in the evenings working after hours. I mean, it's just, she's just a wonderful person.
Okay. I echo that. That was a great award, and very proud that she received it. Other board members?
Derek, how to work this. But I also, just picking up on Rob's visits to schools, Laura was kind enough to schedule several school visits for me in October, so, board members, I hope you can join me, as it's always great to get out into the schools, meet the principal, see the teachers and the kids in action. So, we got, I think, four of those lined up in October.
Okay. Shelley?
Yeah, I just wanted to let the board know that I'm an invited panelist at something called the Vaccine and Healthcare Choice Meeting hosted by two members of our legislature, and that meeting is tomorrow. I won't be presenting anything, but I will be on this panel to answer or to ask questions if I have any. I've been told that there's three meetings. I missed the first one. This is the second one tomorrow, and I've been told that I may ask to be present at the third one. And I've asked them what they want me to present on exactly, and they would like to understand what DVSD's procedures are for tracking vaccinated students, and what their procedures are for managing outbreaks. So, I know a constituent had written me a few months ago and asked me the same question, so I wrote to you. You responded back with what those procedures are, so I believe I have what DVSD would say about that. But if there's anything you want to add before the third meeting, and I can send you the date sometime in October, that would be really helpful. I think the gist of why they want me to talk about that is because there's some feeling like school districts are not able to handle the data flow, this kind of data, that it may not be handled just right, and therefore, organizations like CDPE have to step in to do that, and they're looking for some evidence that districts can manage this data. And so, that's what I would be doing at the meeting.
Would it be helpful to have someone from the district with you to answer questions?
I don't know. If I get the information in advance and can just read it, I think that would be fine, but certainly, anyone's welcome to come. They probably wouldn't be on the panel. They might be in the audience, and I could ask for help if they ask me a question I don't know the answer to. So, up to you. I can let you, I can give you more information.
Yeah, why don't we touch base? So, we'll see if we can give you the information that you need, and then if we need resources available, we're happy to make that happen.
That'd be great.
Other board communication? Okay, that's it. All right. So then, our next item is an information item, and it's 6.1, CBAC update to the board.
Good evening, President Marquess, members of the board, and Dr. Anderson. I'm Rob Price, Assistant Superintendent of Operational Services. Joining me tonight will be Scott Stevens, Executive Director of Bond Planning, and Mike McLaughlin, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee Co-Chair. So, before I get started tonight, I really want to thank those that do the heavy lifting. So, joining us tonight are our project management team that do the work. Collectively, this team has put in $494 million of work in place in five years. This summer, they completed $75 million in 11 weeks. So, the hours are long, it's stressful, and they've done a tremendous job, so we're thankful to have them. But I want to recognize all of them. You will stand, Steve Shoemaker, Brad Gefke, Tom Blahok, John Sinette, Mandy Redfield, Jean Timmerson. We are missing two, Kaky Zeeb and Charles Zemansky couldn't join us tonight, but these individuals have done a phenomenal job. It's a lot of orchestrating, a lot of key members on each team, and our staff, our district as a whole, and our students benefit from that. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Scott Stevens.
Good evening, Board President Marquess, members of the board, and Dr. Anderson. Thank you, Rob. I'd like to echo Rob's comments about our staff. They've done a tremendous amount of work this summer. We're going to talk a little bit about that here in just a minute, but, you know, we get very stressed. We rely on a lot of people to do their jobs and do their work, and it's a hard work, a hard job keeping track of all of that, and I believe our staff does it as best as anybody. So, with that, this summer, we've, as Rob said, we've completed over $75 million worth of work, which included 15 projects in about 10 weeks. Quite a lift. We average about $800,000 to $1 million worth a week while we're doing this, so, to put it into perspective. And then, this work obviously helps schools look, feel, and perform a lot better. Here's a list of the projects that we worked on this summer, from Angivine to Superior. Every school had unique challenges. Some schools started early, some schools had additional time that we've worked on them, but everyone has been going great. We also have 12 projects that are in design for next year, so we'll be doing this all over again next year as well. Sorry. As you're aware, we've been working on full-day kindergarten for quite a while in our master plan. We finished eight classrooms this summer to get them ready to implement the full-day kindergarten program. I think it was very successful. Air conditioning was added in five schools, and, you know, with that, the, there's been, there's quite a bit of work that goes into that, and these photos up here kind of illustrate an example of what it takes to put an air conditioner in a classroom. You pretty much have to tear the whole wall down and reconstruct it to make that happen for one piece of equipment. So, that involves several trades, a lot of man-hours, a lot of work to make that happen, and encompass that with bad weather, a lot of things can happen, right? So, there's a lot that goes into it. Teachers in schools with newly-installed air conditioner are very excited and happy to have that. Playground was another big one. We installed eight new playgrounds. We've improved ADA accessibility on several playgrounds. The photo on the upper right there is a, we call it the Thunderdome, and I want to make sure I got that in there. But if you look at how much square feet is involved in there, and how many kids are involved in that, we really take pride in that. There's a lot of bang for the buck there. The kids really enjoy it. It looks like they're growing really fast, but it really doesn't. It moves really, really slow, but with the kids hanging on it, they have a lot of fun. And then, the photo down below is a photo of a new accessibility ramp at Nederland Elementary School. And it's kind of hard to see it here, but, because it's from the air, but that ramp actually brings in three different levels of playgrounds that makes it completely accessible for any student, if a wheelbarrow-bound student, wheelchair-bound student, to anyone that has other accessibility issues. So, that was a great addition to that. We've completed over $3 million in innovation this summer, and that work has helped in providing gathering spaces to build community, provided flexible furniture, has allowed students and teachers to easily reconfigure learning spaces as needed, and created multi-use spaces that can be used for different types of learning throughout the day. Our education center campus is ongoing. The work at the Culinary Center is still going on. They've got the foundation exterior walls. You might have seen some of the skins on the side of the building. They're working on the roof in the back over here. Demolition of the administration building's been going on. I'm sure you've seen that, and quite a pile, quite a mess over there. That will continue on through this year, and the Culinary Center will be ready to serve food next fall, and then, work on the administration building will continue through the, throughout the next year. Prior to us doing demolition, partners in law enforcement took advantage of the empty building to do some training. And then, also, we had a class, which is a photo here of a class from Arapahoe Campus of the construction arts class, that toured the construction project to see and learn how the work is handled firsthand. A large portion of each project is deferred maintenance. Some examples of this work include full or partial roof replacement. That occurred at seven schools, new boilers, new HVAC systems. This work, along with new windows, doors, and lighting, will improve the overall energy efficiency in our buildings. New wiring was installed to boost functionality of our communications and electrical systems. Restrooms were also renovated in nearly all schools, and we find this work is particularly very appreciated. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Mike McLaughlin, our co-chair to Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. He'll go over his presentation here, and then we'll answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Scott. Good evening. Good to be with you again, Mike McLaughlin. I'm the co-chair of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. As you all know, we provide an independent overview of the projects on the bond program. I've had the opportunity to serve on the Oversight Committee since 2015, so I've seen a good bit of the bond program actually transacted. So, there's a lot of good things and excitement, and I will tell you thanks to the team for the Nederland Project. John, thanks so much. Good stuff. You'll notice that ramp that goes three levels, we don't have a lot of flat space in Nederland, so that elevation assistance is well appreciated. The committee has met once since the last report to the board in June. On this previous meeting, actually, what happened last week, I wasn't able to attend. John Stanton, our current co-chair, has presided over that meeting. There were no actual funding action items at that particular meeting. The meeting was held last week at Lewisville Elementary School, where Principal Jeff Miller provided a tour. Jeff, of course, was our Nederland Elementary principal, so while we're sad to see Jeff go, he's doing great work at Lewisville, and they did some really innovative work there. So, on your tours, I would seek out those improvements that the bond program have funded because they're pretty compelling. At the meeting, staff provided updates on the summer construction. You've seen some of that. We also talked about University Hill and the air conditioning data collection. Two community members spoke to the committee concerning the need for air conditioning in the schools, and specifically, the schools without it. Both community members described the hot conditions and shared petitions supporting the installation of air conditioning. Staff shared with the committee, in conjunction with and as part of that, their plan to move forward using unallocated bond funds to install air conditioning in buildings that will be under construction next summer. You saw a list of those schools that are actually getting it this summer. That's great. We're going to make progress on it, right? But the bond program won't be able to completely close that gap as it's set today. This is consistent with the direction that you all provided us last February, and the committee is in support of that plan. At each meeting, the committee oversees the financial reports, and staff presents a forecasted, projected recommendations for the bond premium funds. There's really a couple of items that are still outstanding out there that we're keeping an eye on, and that we've got an idea of what we're going to need to in moving forward. Those include the Boulder High Rec Field House and the University Hill. We think there's going to probably be some need there. We've have a total expenditures of over $403 million today, so we've done a lot of work, and these guys have really executed extremely well. We keep close track of how we're doing against budget. Pleased to say that we're continuing on that trend of averaging about 1% below projected spend, so that's great. I think we've got great accountability that's happening there. The other thing that John wanted to make sure that we also touched on is that the committee is performing that independent oversight. We are very aware of and seek out community feedback, and we try to incorporate that as part of our deliberation process. There are outstanding contracted commitments this time totaling $58 million, and we expect through the fiscal year 2019-2020 that we're going to have expenditures totaling about $115 million. That's what I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all of the service you've given to our bond. It's so helpful just to have your leadership in this huge project.
Happy to do it.
Board members, any questions?
Yes, Kitty? So, you said there's not enough extra money to put air conditioning in all the schools. How many schools can we air condition with the money that you all have?
Rob, you want to give me the specifics?
I will. We have, right now, 16 schools that don't have air conditioning, not including the mountain schools. We're not planning on air conditioning those. Three of the 16 already called for to get air conditioning: NuVista, UniHill, the primary, or the intermediate building, the large building, and Halcyon. So, now, we're down to 13. This coming summer, we will be making a recommendation to air condition five, assuming the estimates come in below $10 million. That will leave us eight to complete, and those estimates are somewhere $10 to $15 million to complete those other eight.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Kathy?
A couple years ago, we did a joint bus tour with members of CBAC and members of the board to see some of the projects. I'm wondering, Rob, if we could think about putting one of those together, maybe sometime in the next couple months? It was just a nice way for the board members to interact with CBAC members and see some of the actual work, and it's been a couple of years since we've done that.
Yes, we can totally do that. And I'm wondering if it might be a nice learning opportunity as we welcome new board members, so potentially, we could look at something as they onboard maybe in January. Does that work for folks? And Sam and Shelley, you always can come if you'd like. You can drive.
All right. Anything else? Donna?
I only have plans for January 10.
Okay. All righty. Well, thanks again. Our next item is 6.2, update to regulation J E C C R.
So, board members, we're bringing this forward as an information item. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Kathleen Sullivan to describe the slight change we made in this regulation.
Okay, so, this is a minor change, but an important one. We've spoken with the board about our need to update these policies in many ways, but we're really just bringing this forward for one change, to make sure that we don't make the open enrollment process any more confusing than it has to be for families. Because we've implemented full-day kindergarten, there's specific language around open enrollment to peak to peak that had two different kindergarten programs prior to this year. Now, we have only one program, so it was really important, we felt, to get that information out of the regulation so that we could be clear with our families. This regulation, as well as the policy that it supports, are slated for a comprehensive policy review in the early spring. So, tonight, we're just bringing forward that one change.
And just, we'll change the date on it. I think it says 2018 on the top?
Yes, so we will need to. As a regulation, we give you notice and then 30 days to implement, so we'll be sure to update that revised date and then make the correction on page six.
Kitty?
Yeah, I think I know the answer to this question, but if somebody is enrolling their student in a preschool in a different school because theirs doesn't offer it, but it's not a focus school, do they automatically go back to their neighborhood school for kindergarten?
I'm looking for a friend in the audience, and I see none.
We're happy to get you that answer. If we can capture that, then we'll make sure we can get that to you and get that to you all in writing.
I would hope they could. Other questions, board members, on J E C C R? All right. Well, then, thanks for the heads-up, and we'll move on to our next item, which are the number seven action items: Consent Grouping, 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, September 10th, 2019, Special Meeting, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, September 10th, 2019, Regular Meeting, 7.4 Approval of Minutes, September 17th, 2019, Special Meeting, 7.5 Acceptance of Donation, Foothill Elementary, 7.6 Facilities Management Assistant, Novolo, 7.7 Resolution 1931 in Support of Census 2020, 7.8 Resolution 1932 in Support of Ballot-Ishue Proposition CC, 7.9 Grant, Arapahoe Ridge High School Implementation Network for AEC Campuses, Colorado Department of Education, 19. All right, so, first, board members, anyone want to pull anything? Kitty?
I would like to pull 7.8 Resolution 1932 in Support of Ballot-Ishue Proposition CC.
Okay. Any other items board members would like to pull? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the remaining items? Sam, seconded by Shelley. Any questions or discussion around the remaining items? Kathy?
Rob, I was hoping you could talk a little about the grant and what's going to happen with Arapahoe Campus, the CDE grant?
This is a grant that was brought to us by Arapahoe Ridge. It looks as if it's a grant for just under $40,000 to support some of the professional development for their teachers. I believe they have a consultant in mind. We can certainly get more details for the board if you all would like to see that, but this is something that they brought to us. They were excited to be able to provide this opportunity for their teachers and staff.
Okay, so we'll get more information on that. Any other questions about the remaining items? All right, Laura, would you please call the roll on the consent grouping?
Benford.
Yes.
Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so our next item are action items, and we'll start with 8.1, Approval of District Accountability Committee Membership, and then, we'll have the items pulled from Consent Grouping. Okay? Because that's what it says on the agenda. So, Approval of District Accountability Committee Membership. If you recall, we had a couple questions about membership last time, and the list has been updated. Is, did anyone have any questions? Richard?
Does that mean that there's no charter school representation? Because I, when I went through the list, I didn't see any representation from charter schools at all.
At all?
Does it?
Horizon has a representative as well.
What happened to Justice High?
So I've spoken to Justice High, and they have another candidate to serve on DAC, and we're having them fill out the application process as we speak, so we don't have that name on here tonight because they hadn't filled out the proper paperwork, but we're working on making sure they have representation.
Boulder Prep doesn't have one either.
Yeah, there are definitely schools that don't have representatives yet. I just want to add that DAC has done an incredible job increasing representation from our schools, but we can continue to look for representatives. But I do think this is a pretty big improvement over the last couple of years overall.
And we continue to prioritize this, and we'll continue to work with those schools to come up with ways to get folks to dedicate that time to district accountability committee as we have reshifted some of the work this year of the district accountability committee and have done more empowering of both those committees and how they work with schools to think about school improvement. I think that we're going to see an uptick in interest just by the nature of the work that's happening.
Any other questions about this membership list for the district accountability committee? Yeah, that's great. Do we have a motion to approve this list? Kathy, seconded by Kitty. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhart.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so now let's go on to our polled motion, which is 7.8 Resolution 1932 in support of ballot issue proposition CC. Kitty, do you want to?
Yeah, I just have a question. Twice, in two different places in the wherethes, we talk about a teacher shortage and teacher salaries, and yet, none of this money could be used for that. So I'm wondering why those two are in the wherethes.
So I did start with the Colorado Association of School Board sample resolution, so I will confess that is not language that I wrote, but it is language that I proposed to be left in the resolution, but I definitely hear that.
I mean, I don't object, I was just curious.
That's a good point, because, and I think the clarification is this is all money that can only be used for one-time expenses, so it can't be applied to a salary.
And in classrooms.
But you could, in a shortage, you know, get a pair for a year or something, which might help supplement with a situation. So I don't have a huge problem with it personally, but...
Oh, I don't have a problem, I just wondered.
Other discussion about?
I thought it did say it was only for one-time expenses.
But that's what I read, I'm not an expert on proposition CC. Kathy?
I think part of the issue is, it's just a risk. You could put it in salaries if you wanted to, but it's only available as we have surplus.
Exactly.
So...
It doesn't say anywhere that you can't do that.
Yeah, I agree. They leave it pretty open.
Other, or do we have a motion? Do we want to put a motion to approve this as is? Kathy, seconded by Kitty. Other discussion?
Yeah.
Shelley?
Like so many... I'm not sure what the downside of applying a resolution is. If you do allocate, I think it's a question of whether you can get even a lot of money.
How it's going to come back to BVSD. So, there's no guarantee it's going to go to public education, there's no guarantee it's going to go to BVSD. I feel like it would be misleading for a school board to vote for this and suggest to people that it will, when there's absolutely no guarantee.
Okay. Kathy?
Well, you're right, the legislature can do what it wants to, but I think that's where we have to rely on our own strength as a board to go talk to the legislature, because there is a promise that they've made to the public that they'll spend it a third, a third, a third, and I think...
I don't see that in the bill.
There's a separate companion piece, there's Prop CC, and then they also passed a companion piece of legislation that divides it up because there was that concern. That's, I don't have it in front of me, but...
But we're not supporting a companion piece of legislation with this resolution.
Correct. But my point is, is that it's like when we pass a bond or a mill ourselves, the language is really broad, and then the material that we use to talk to our public about how we're going to spend the money holds us accountable, but it's not in the actual language of the bond. And so I think to not support this is, I don't understand why we wouldn't want to have it, keep the money that we collect, there's no tax increase on this at all, and so to, there's lots of needs in the state, and to not join up with other entities such as highways and higher ed to support an effort to keep the money that we bring in, I think, is an important statement that we will work to try and keep the money that, you know, they said we're going to keep, but also that we will work together with them to try to meet all of the unmet needs that are out there.
Well, if the companion bill was something we were resolving to support, I might feel differently about it. This is no different than probably the, this is probably the fourth bill that's come forward that's trying to fund education differently in Colorado. They've all failed because there's absolutely no guarantee that this money will go where they say it will. And to say that it's not an increased tax, I mean, that's true, but it's still, you know, people would be getting that money back, so it may not be an increased tax, but it is a reduction in, you know, in what they'll get back. So, and I'm not opposed to, you know, voting to do something with that money, I'm not attached to Tabor or anything, but I feel like this is really weak, this bill, very weak.
Well, I don't think it's the same as the past ballot measures we've had where we actually are trying to increase taxes to fund K-12. This is really just what Tabor asks us to do, which is ask if we can keep the money that we bring in over the Tabor limit.
Yeah, but there's such a deficit in transportation, roads, and bridges, there's just no question in my mind that that's where the vast majority of this money is going to go.
Well, then again, Shelley, we just have to hope that we can be persuasive at the legislature and with our elected representatives, that they hold to the promises that they've made to the public as to how they're going to allocate these dollars.
I'm not optimistic.
I've always heard a saying about what assume means or what hope means, and I had a hard time with it, having just gotten it at the last minute yesterday, but I did pull it, and it's real easy for our community to read, it's only two pages long. I realize the flesh pancake score is 27, and they say the understandability might not be at 27, but what, I understand that I would get $37 back, that's not that much, but I'd like to know that if I got it back, I'd gladly donate it to our school district. I'm all about education and putting the money into it, but I really think that this leads too much, the blue book said a third, a third, a third, but yet, when I read the actual, what we're approving tonight, there's no guarantee, and so I have a hard time supporting it and looking like all this money's going to go towards our school districts.
Other comments?
Well, I believe there's no guarantee for anything. I know that we've been trying to increase funding for public education for many, many years, and I'm supporting this resolution because I think it's about time, and I think we should do it and work hard to, if there's any doubt that our state legislature is not going to live up to its commitments, then I think that we need to replace our state legislators too, so I think that we should vote affirmative on this resolution.
Other comments?
I think we should replace them now because they can't write a bill that is strong enough to do what we want it to do, and they've shown that year after year after year.
Well, November's coming up very soon.
That's right. Other comments?
All right, and I'm going to be supporting this too. I agree with Richard, we haven't had a lot of guarantees in education funding, and we certainly don't have guarantees in our annual revenue. So I'm hopeful that the legislature will do the right thing and with some influence that they will commit to a third, a third, a third, and ultimately, there is one budget, and that's another issue, so, and it will help with that one budget, so that's my thought too.
Any other comments, or should we call the roll? Oh.
Yeah, I just don't understand why we wouldn't support it, because, so there's no guarantee, but to say, okay, we don't support it, that is a guarantee, and that is, we will get nothing. So, I'm definitely in favor of this.
All right. Laura, do...
I think, Kitty, that, like I said, the issue with it for me is that because we're a school board, we're pretty much saying, you know, we support this because there's going to be money coming into the public schools, and we can't say that from this bill, the way it's written. And so that's what people are going to think that we're supporting. It'd be different if we were just, you know, some planning board or something, and anything that this bill supported would be good news, like, we didn't care if it went for transportation, we didn't care if it went for higher ed, we didn't care if it went for public schools, then it wouldn't make any difference. But to be a school board and support this and to send a message that this money's coming back to us, I think is misleading.
Yeah, and I disagree, because I think it says, we're just going to trust the legislature to do what they said they're going to do. If they don't, we can't do anything about it, but they did say they were going to do this, so let's hold their feet to the fire if it passes.
And I just think they've said it in the past, and legislators need to set priorities and fund education in a way that is sustainable and guaranteed, and this proposition, to me, doesn't do that, and we are leading the voters on to think that we're going to get that. Like I said, if I got my $37 back, I'd give it right to the school district, but I can't see that this, we keep saying trust and assume, and I don't feel that those are good basis to put this in.
Okeydoke. Laura, do you want to call the roll? Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhart.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
No.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So our next item is item number nine, policy study. 9.1, study of policies IB, academic freedom INB, teaching about controversial issues KE, public complaints and concerns KE, regulation or R, KEC, public complaints about the curriculum or instructional materials or strategies K E C R, KEC, exhibit 1, E1, patron request for reconsideration of learning materials. Okay, so this is some making progress on our policies, and as Kathleen pointed out, we are also getting rid of some policies, and it's always great to retire some if we're adding others, because we have too many, in my opinion. All right, so who wants to kick us off here?
Good evening, thank you. I'm glad to be able to bring you what I hope is going to be progress in the policy realm. Some of this work began last spring as we worked through some challenges in the community that were brought forward. I think there was some confusion about some of our policies, and the point of this update is to make clear what policies apply and how, if a member of the public has a concern, they're able to bring that concern forward. So, we had multiple complaint processes, not just under, for civil rights complaints that are addressed under policy AC that the board completed in the last couple of months. We also have a few other areas where members of the public can bring a complaint, but I think what we need here is just real clarity. So rather than having a separate policy that talks about a student complaint, another policy that talks about a general public complaint, and then a third set of policy that allows a member of the public to express a concern about curriculum and instruction, we are getting down to three processes. AC that will apply to any civil rights complaint, any sort of racial harassment, sexual harassment, concerns of that nature will be addressed under policy AC. Policy KE will be the broader complaint policy that a member of the public or a student can follow in addressing a general concern. And then the third process that is left in place in policy is under KEC, these are complaints about curriculum or instruction. The reason that we have three separate sets of procedures is because we're implementing a myriad, or myriad, federal and state laws through these policies. The civil rights complaints have several layers of required procedure and language that we need, so that's its own category. And then when we look about, look at complaints about curriculum or instruction, what's unique in the existing board policies is that the individual who will be addressing those concerns has the ability to use a curriculum committee to work through that concern. Having the ability to do that, I think, is a really important aspect when you're talking about curriculum or instruction, which is the reason that I'm recommending to the board that we leave that in place. And then any other type of complaint would be captured in the general complaint policy KE. That allows us to do some good cleanup work, I think. The board had already made important improvements to policies around material selections, that is in policy IJ that was revised in January 2018. IJ itself really takes care of policies IAC about media, material selection, IIAE around instructional materials, the student complaint policy I already mentioned, and then finally, retiring a series of exhibits that do not advance your policy interests. They really were sort of templates for what a response to that concern could look like, but it lacked the detail that this board wanted when we were working through these policies. So I've now embedded those requirements within the policy and regulation itself instead of leaving it in a separate exhibit.
So, should we start with specific questions by each policy going in order? Would that work best?
I defer to you.
Okay.
I think we can handle it any way you would like to.
Okeydoke.
A general or a specific question.
All right, so why don't we take them one at a time, just in the order that they're here? So we'll start with policy IB. So this is study, so we're not going to be taking action on these, and this is when we give, provide our feedback or have questions. So did anyone have any questions or comments about policy IB? Kitty?
Well, my only comment is that I'm glad we're taking a look at it, since this was adopted before many of our employees were even born. So 1978 was a long time ago, so it's about time we look at it again.
Good point. Any other questions about IB? Going once? All right, INB. I have a question about INB. In section three, under, it's sort of in the third or fourth page, it says administration, three administration, and then number D, it talks about the utilization of a guest speaker to present different points of view as long as the prior approval of the principal is secured. I feel like when we were talking about materials, we decided to go with the approval of the district, but just wanted to make sure that for guest speakers, we're okay with the principal, not the district.
I think that's really excellent feedback, and what I would say is, this is a topic that we covered very carefully when we looked at policy IGAE, which is the board's health education policy. We put in very specific language around guest speakers as part of your general health curriculum, and then as involved with sexuality curriculum. My suggestion, I think, to respond to your feedback would be that we rework that language so that the discussion of how guest speakers are really used are addressed in that more specific policy. Or I cross-reference it there.
Other questions about this policy, INB? Donna?
I had a question on, because this came up...
I had a question on, because this came up last spring, on, is there a reason why we took out the definition for controversial issues? And then, under responsibilities, do we include parents and guardians in that? And that would be on Page 2, controversial issues defined. It seems real loose on the definition. And then, under responsibilities, can we include parents and guardians? And maybe that's what you meant by patrons of the district?
So I'll take your first que, your second question first, if that's okay.
Okay.
I do think that as I work through your, the policy book, that historically, the district has used patrons to collectively reference parents, guardians, and community members. I will admit that that word just didn't ring all that clearly in my ears, patrons. And I would look for some direction from the board as to how you might want to best reference that group. But we could also just put parents, guardians, and community members there instead of patrons.
I like that. That's me. Yeah, just a little clearer.
And then to your harder question, what are we doing with this definition of controversial issues? So if you look at Policy IB, the one that Ms. Sargent noted, had not been updated since 1978, there's a note at the bottom of that policy that really talks about the fact that this controversial issues policy, districts that have those, and the original intent of this policy is to empower teachers to use discussion of specific topics to build student skills. So the intent is to empower teachers to take something like climate change, or gun control, or another topic, similar topic, and use that intentionally and instructionally in the classroom. This policy is not intended to create a very broad complaint route for anybody who may disagree with a piece of our curriculum or with an instructional strategy. So I tried to simplify the language around controversial issues to make that clear, and then drive what would be a concern about curriculum or instruction to the revised KEC policy.
That actually makes a lot of sense to me. Sam?
Thank you for all your work on this, Kathleen. Not easy. Appreciate it. So I see, under 2D, provision to provide alternate projects for students whose involvement would constitute a serious burden of conscience. How is the student to know that, or their parents to know that, in advance? Or, I recall the issue in the spring, there had been advance notice about the presentation in question, and so parents had an opportunity to react to that. I wasn't sure where in this advance notice was, or if that's even included. In which case, how is a student or their parents to know in advance that they're going to need, and the teacher, that they're going to need, alternative projects? Are you following me?
Yeah, absolutely. I do. So when we looked at Policy IGAE, the health policy, where we do, we did incorporate into that policy state law-specific notice provisions, and then the corresponding excusal provision. So, in Colorado law, I know this might be surprising to a lot of us with children in school, but under Colorado law, opt-out rights or excusal rights are specifically created by statute. There isn't any specific topic or specific notice requirement that attaches around teaching of a controversial issue or using a controversial issue for instruction. Like many things that we do with our curriculum, I think the notice is going to come from the class syllabus and from communications that the families receive about these learning activities. And then, if a student or a family believes that that particular activity is going to conflict with their religious beliefs or some other sort of constitutionally protected belief, then they would have the ability to advocate for themselves at the school level.
So, maybe I missed some of what you said, but, so where's the part where a parent gets advanced notice that something's going to be taught? Do the teachers have responsibility for that in this list? Because it says adequate time to give, no, that's, no, I don't see it.
There is not a specific notification requirement in this policy. The other notice requirements we've embedded in policy and other policies have come from state law. And there is no general sort of, tell everybody, all of the curricular areas you're going to teach this year, and then let them select those that they may opt out of. There isn't any sort of affirmative notice obligation. So my response was to suggest that when we are using a controversial issue to teach, that notice of that to families would come from a syllabus, if we're talking about a student and an older student in an advanced course, or it would come through course-specific information that the teacher in school would be providing about that classwork.
Okay, so they would have notice, either by means of the syllabus or some other notification?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your whole question.
They would get notice by means of the syllabus or some other communication?
That would be, I think, our general day-to-day, is parents get notice of what their kids are doing at school through those materials that come home, through what our kids tell us they're working on, and through any sort of school or class-based communication.
So what in this policy would have helped the situation that we went through earlier this year? Is there anything here that would have prevented that from happening?
I think if you look at the comprehensive set of policy recommendations that are proposed for the board now, and that we've already addressed through your prior work, I think the improvement is clarity in what the process looks like and which policies apply. So candidly, I don't know that I would have addressed this policy at all in the spring, and I think the improvements in this wording would make clear that there is a complaint right if you're talking about health or sexuality education, or about religious rights. It would not be this policy, though.
Right, this is not the policy that we wanted to use in the spring, and now we're clarifying that this was not the applicable policy.
That's right.
Okay. And I just want to clarify, I don't have an expectation upon our teachers that if they speak about climate change, there needs to be a separate, dedicated notice to each student in Boulder High School. I don't want to put that burden at this point, because I think the expectation here is that we can discuss issues that are controversial, like climate change, but I don't think a formal notice is expected by this policy.
That's correct.
Right, so you're, so we're saying that parents can find out about it, but really a syllabus is not a notice, and I don't think we're setting an expectation of that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I think as long as something's on a syllabus. My question is when something, like if a speaker comes in, or if some topic comes up that's not on the syllabus, and you know it's a controversial issue, and a parent might be concerned about it, you know, where in any of our policies is it required to tell them so that they can make a decision about whether they want their child to be part of that or not?
Well, now that's where I'm getting at, is I don't, I don't know if I'd agree, especially at the high school level, that anything controversial needs to be proactively noticed. It can be contained in the course materials, or the teacher could say, "We're having this speaker coming on Thursday," and it seems like that happens pretty consistently. But I could, but, and this is my question, I don't think we want to create that notice process necessarily.
Well, then you're going to have the same problem we had.
Well, that was, that's a different policy, though. So I don't, we didn't have a controversial issue in the spring. We had a religious freedom issue. So I don't think this is the same. But I think this is a good discussion to have in terms of what are our expectations.
I agree that at the high school level, there's a lot of discussion that takes place. I'm in communication with several high school teachers, and all of a sudden, something will come up in class, you can't give advanced notice. But one of my concerns would be, let's say kindergarten, and you're going to read a book that may be very controversial, that a student, that your little kiddo may come home and say, "You're not ready for that discussion," and you don't think they are. That's where I would think a advanced notice might come in. "We're going to read a book that you guys might not want your kids to be here for."
And this doesn't, policy doesn't specify age groups at all. So you mentioned high school, but the policy doesn't.
And I think part of it is that the sexual education and the religious rights are covered under two different policies. So right now, we're just talking about other issues that might come up. And I believe that it provides enough information that there's a route to go if you have an issue, but without providing notice of any conceivable controversial issue that might be discussed in K through 12. So I think, I'm actually okay with this, especially given the protection of the two other policies on the topics of those complaints.
I'm just looking for a solution to what happened earlier.
So this, this policy didn't apply.
I get you.
Okay.
I mean, as long as the solution's in some, some policy somewhere.
It's in the policy we already looked at. So we looked at that policy, and I think we're all set with that policy. Am I, Kathleen, is that correct?
We did make sure that in Policy IGAE, we made the notice and the excusal procedure explicit, so that it would be clear for parents, teachers, and administrators.
So any other feedback on Policy KE? Controversial issues? Kitty?
It says that the complaint must be made during the school year, and that it won't be considered if it is not. But what if something happens close to the end of the year, and say, a parent doesn't even find out about it? Or it could have happened in the middle of the year, and the parent didn't find out about it till after school ended. Are they barred from lodging a complaint?
And I, can I tag along on that one? Because that's a comment I had. It says specifically in the opening paragraph for that policy that this does not apply to sexual harassment, which I think would have no limitations. However, if you forgot that as you're traveling and reading down this policy, I'm wondering if we should just reinforce that obviously, any kind of sexual harassment or discrimination suit would have no time cap on it as well. Does that make sense?
It does. You mean, would only have the cap, the legal cap, not any policy-imposed limitation?
Yeah. But what about if it happens at the end of the year? Yeah. We're on KE, right?
Uh huh.
It's the last sentence.
Mm-hmm.
Last sentence.
Yeah, that just doesn't seem reasonable to me.
What about something like, it has to have happened in the last 12 months?
And honestly, I'm looking to see, I believe that that language, again, I'm not trying to criticize CASV samples, since many of them I wrote in a prior job. But I think any policy that we write, if you go back to it with fresh eyes a few months later, you can almost always inevitably make an improvement. And I do think that that would make some sense. And to just soften that language to case-by-case consideration, yeah.
I would just say, logistically, from somebody who spent a lot of years in schools and would have to kind of track down some of these issues, when you move outside of the school year, kids are gone, teachers are gone, some of the folks that are there. So certainly, we can, we can adjust this, certainly want to be reasonable, but there's also, there's certain realities that certain information, once the school year is over, is no longer accessible.
Well, and we, maybe that could, I don't know if it'd be appropriate to point that piece out in the policy. But, you know, if I were a parent and I had a complaint, and it was June 15th, and I just found out about it, and I read this, I would feel really frustrated.
So do you want to address, see if we can work on that language?
Yeah, I think hearing that concern and Dr. Anderson's acknowledgement of really the practical reason that language is in, I think I could come up with some improved language for your consideration at the next meeting.
Yeah, or even just add to that, unless the complainant is not, or becomes aware of the situation after the end of the school year. So it still puts the onus on them to do it while school's in session, if they know about it. So they can't stew about it for a few months, and then in July, lodge a complaint.
Okay. Then I would just add that the word patrons is in there again, and it kind of has the same effect of maybe making parents feel like they're not included as part of it.
Thank you.
Any other comments on KE? All right, so we'll move on to KER. I have a question here. There's, under B, with District Level Review, it, in the second paragraph, the policy reads that an appeal must be submitted within 10 working days after the building or department decision. And that, in the next paragraph, the district can, should reply in five days unless additional time is needed. I'm wondering if we can loosen up the timeline for the person who makes the appeal? And there are a couple instances like this where we have some firm timelines on the complainant's side, that it might be nice to say, "Unless you need time for a reason," or something like that. So it just feels friendlier. And then, but then retaining the additional time being needed on the staff side, I think, is fine, as long as we reciprocate on the complainant's side. Donna?
Let me ask, on the first page, on, under A, why did we take out the complaint, the complaint itself, maybe oral or in writing, and we took out that timeframe? I'd like to see a timeframe left in there. Because then it could be ignored forever, and these other two wouldn't even be applicable.
Donna, I don't see what you're, which section, where are you?
First page, Initial Complaints in Building or Department Level Review. Review at the initial level is informal and should follow a discussion format. The complaint itself may be oral or in writing, and then the next was taken out. See, it's, the district employee receiving the complaint shall provide a response within five working days?
So do I understand your comment to be that you'd like to see a timeframe for response there?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, other questions or comments about KER? Everyone okay with the rest of it? Yeah? Should we move on? Okay, then we go on to KEC, Complaints About Curriculum or Instruction. Any comments about KEC? It's a short one?
Yeah, it's too short.
It's too short for Kitty. Ad language. We don't care what. Is it okay to move on to KECR? Board members here? Board members, yeah? Okay, KECR, public complaints about curriculum and instruction. This is the similar level of review.
I have a question about KEC.
KEC, okay.
Yeah. So at Boulder High, there was somewhat of an outcry when the English teacher was teaching The Blue Asai, which is a fairly controversial book across the country, not just in Boulder. So with this, it says the policy's not to be used to supplant board policies or procedures related to material selection and adoption. So what, what would a parent do under this policy in that case? Would they have the right to say, "I don't want my child reading that," or how would that, where would they go to get?
So they would still be able to bring that complaint forward under this item if they wanted to. We would obviously encourage the parent to start at the school level, and work through any conversation. Part of the intent of these policies is to make it really clear for parents, that we hope they will work with employees at the most direct level. But if they, if a parent, guardian, or member of the public felt that that was an inappropriate item to be included in the curriculum, then they would have available to them the procedure established by this policy and regulation.
Even though, you know, we may have said it was fine for the English teacher to choose that book, like?
I would certainly think if we've worked it through that sort of selection process, then this complaint process may be relatively efficient, but it would still be the clear process available to that individual.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, so going back to KECR. Any questions? I just have the same comment here, where we have a couple hard deadlines on the complainant's side. Any questions or comments? Sam?
Yeah, it's more of a hypothetical question. I'm not sure which policy it refers to, so I can wait.
All right. Should we go on to the exhibit, the form that we use to submit the complaint? That's what this is? Is this going to be available in Spanish?
Yes.
See? Questions about the form? Anything? All right. Sam, do you want to share your hypothetical?
Yeah, sure. It's just, let's say, it's a, I don't want my children to learn about the theory of evolution. It's not really that it's about religion, you know, so I'm not sure IGA covers that. Nor do I necessarily feel a teacher should be obligated to provide alternative projects if a student's parents object to them learning about evolution. Does the parent have the grounds to say, "You have to provide something different for my student to do in that case?" I'm just, it's just hypothetical, I'm thinking of different things that might be controversial within one family, but are accepted part of the curriculum.
So you're really asking, I think, a constitutional question. I think that there's broad case law in the school law area that really looks at issues or practices of schools that burden religion. The evolution issue has certainly been addressed multiple times. I don't think we have a specific policy that just acknowledges generally that people have constitutional rights, and that if they feel that those rights are being imposed upon, or infringed upon, that they have the ability to have that conversation at the, at the school level, or to bring it to the district level.
So are you saying that a parent could opt their child out of the teaching of evolution in our district?
No. I'm not saying that they could clearly opt out of evolution, or teaching of evolution. I'm saying that generally, if parents have a deeply held belief that they believe is being burdened, that we have an obligation to do an inquiry. And right now, I think evolution has been recognized as a scientific theory that is included in every science curriculum across the country. But I don't think that we can sit and say, "Absolutely, no matter what, no matter what the issue is, if it's part of our approved curriculum, we're not going to listen if a family expresses a religious concern."
Okay.
Just, just a quick question here. It's not, it's not hypothet, well, it's happening in our schools, and I'm wondering if the reading to end racism activities that we have, I think they're mostly in elementary schools, if I'm not mistaken?
No, I've done it in high schools.
Have you? Is, is that an approved district activity that we have?
Don't look at me.
Who do I look?
Rob.
And the reason I'm saying, no, because I think it should stay. I'm just wondering if, if that became a controversial issue, how would that be handled?
I can't turn my mic on.
Which is, maybe it was a strategy to, but, so, so I think we need to answer a couple things. Number one, with the program that you're talking about, has it been adopted district-wide, or is it something that schools are choosing to use? And then, in the, in the event that somebody would say that that might be controversial, you know, I don't find that controversial. You know, I think what Kathleen is alluding to is that, you know, even with the best of policies, we're still, you can't create policy that's going to solve every individual situation. Right? So we can, there are going to be certain things, and to Kathleen's point, we have an obligation, I believe as a superintendent, I have an obligation to be able to listen through when there are, are issues that are brought up, and try to work through those the best we can with our talented staff, with our legal counsel. And so I think that as we think about policy, policy should get you there most of the time, but there's going to be times where policy, you can't write policy that's going to solve every issue that you deal with.
So I am going to submit an RFI, and make sure that, not make sure, but hopefully, that will become an adopted district activity.
And I'll just make a comment about reading to end racism. I agree that it doesn't seem like a controversial issue, but when you think about the recent articles about the 1619 project, that is becoming a controversial issue, and it mirrors a little bit of what we saw in a neighboring district when they started to reexamine the direction of the AP US History course. And that quickly became a controversial issue. So I think it is an excellent question to think about some of these, these topics that emerge, and how we deal with them, and remain an inclusive community, but also have these conversations. Any other comments or questions on this wonderful grouping of policy? All right, so we can move on to agenda setting, item 10. We have an RFI coming from Richard. Any other comments? Agenda items? Sam and Shelley, your time is running out. You have several, and you're going to do them on, what, November 6th?
When's our next agenda setting? Do we have one with Heather scheduled, or what's this?
We probably need to do that, get an agenda setting priority. We also, and we're also going to be, you know, we're going to have a new board in a short time, so that will be also a time to, for the board to get together and set our norms, and talk about what agenda setting looks like in the coming year.
So per, on the calendar, we would typically do something in late October. I think I would turn to the board and ask what your preference is by doing that, right before we have a new, our board elections. Does it make sense until we have our new board members elected, and then go through that process again?
I would, I, my preference would be the new board. No offense.
No, I would wait, I would wait.
Yeah, I agree.
We'll work, we'll work to schedule that.
I like the idea of adding in board norms with the new board, in addition with agenda setting.
All right. Okay, so with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting.